All right, welcome everyone. Welcome. Welcome to the Thursday, October 12th, 2023 Town Council Meeting. As always, we start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I like Nikki to lead us off. She knew it was coming because she's back in the beach.
To the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic which stands one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Roll call. Here.
Can't hear anything.
Can you? How about now?
Miss. I can hear you. I can hear you, but.
Can you hear me, Ms. Kabler?
Yeah, now I can.
All right.
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It was my fault. I'm sorry. Troncone? Mr. Wilcox?
All right. Councilman Dotson should be here any minute. We move on. We will skip approval of the agenda. We'll skip the minutes, the minutes, the minutes. Hold on. Make sure I don't skip around. Well, we got to skip minutes. We've got to skip minutes. Let's get. We'll move, move right into. All right, let's move right into proclamations. I do have a proclamation for tonight. I noticed there's some veterans out here in the audience. A fellow council member, Mr. Dotson, who's not here, is also a veteran. So tonight I'm honored to, the town of North Beach observes Operation Green Light for veterans. Green Light is supporting, you know, we have over 300,000 veterans that leave active duty every year. And in North Beach, I know we have a, we have a very large, large group of veterans that live here, that have retired here. Plus so many elected officials are former veterans themselves. So we as a town are going to support them. And I'm going to read this, actually the whole thing to you. This is a proclamation from the town of North Beach. Whereas the residents of the town of North Beach, Maryland have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have served or selfishly served our comp, unselfishly, served our country and this community in the armed forces. And where whereas the contributions and sacrifice of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas the town of North Beach, Maryland seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, Veterans of Foreign Wars, religious groups, civil service by functioning as county veterans, service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than 52 billion in federal health disability and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. Whereas studies indicate that 44 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. Whereas active service, active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during this, their first year after military service. Whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, municipalities to recognize, recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas the town of North Beach, Maryland appreciates the sacrifices of our military, our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now, therefore, I, Michael Benton, Mayor of the town of North Beach hereby proclaim from November 6th through November 12th, 2023 as Operation Green Light. And I encourage the citizens of North Beach to recognize the importance of honor and all those who have made insurmountable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence. Signed, Michael Benton, Mayor. So I'm sure everybody in this room knows a veteran. Please reach out. I do know Sneed's is working. They're very community orientated when it comes to the green lights. American Legion and Chesapeake Beach is huge. So if you don't have a green light, please get one. Let's make it happen. Let's light up the whole town green and show our recognition or our support of our veterans. Thank you so much. All right, Stacy, would you like to go back? We have two council members here. All right. Thank you very much. All right, let's go back to page one, approval of agenda. Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to have a second. We have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right, thank you. Minutes of past meetings, a minutes from the September 14th, 2023 Town Council Meeting. Motion to approve the minutes from the September 14th, 2023 Town Council Meeting as submitted.
Move to.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Last one, I promise you. Minutes from the September 21st, 2023 Special Town Council Meeting. Motion to approve the minutes from the September 21st, 2023 Town Council Meeting.
The move.
We have a motion. We have a second.
A second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Actually, Stacy, I abstained from that one because I was not at that meeting.
So please note record that Councilman Troncone has abstained. All right. Minutes from the October 5th, 2023 Work Session. We need a motion to approve the minutes from the October 5th, 2023 Work Session.
A move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much. All right. Proclamation is taken care of. Let's go right to the Public Safety Report on page three. Who would be giving that report tonight? Oh, fantastic.
So after 11 years, Corporal Fox is called back to the road to give the road a little bit of his experience. So oh boy. Can you hear me now? Good. So Corporal Fox went back to the road and in her play, in his place, excuse me, we got Corporal Gilmore. So I'd like to welcome her back. We've gone over the town report from this month as well as going over the traffic initiatives we're pulling inside the beach and the need for further traffic enforcements. September showed a pretty, pretty normal month, low on crime. We had a few arrests for assaults, things of that nature. Does anybody have any questions about the report?
Cal, were you having anything? I know you've been on top of this. I, I don't have any. The reports in there. Also for all the residents in the audience, we do use Board Docs. You can see everything we're seeing. You can log into it. You can download the reports. You can see what's going on. If, if there's ever, I do want to pass the one thing. If it's an emergency, it's 911. If it's a non-emergency, 535-2800, and they will have one of the deputies to wherever you are as quick as possible. But 911 emergency, not emergency, but you need to have a deputy is 535-2800. Council members, anybody have any questions about the report?
I just have a comment. I just want to thank you for your, your effort on the traffic enforcement. You made over, I think, 24 stops last month, and I appreciate it. And I think it'll have a positive effect going forward in terms of, you know, reducing some of the speeding we see in town. So I appreciate it. Thank you. And thank you for the, for the detailed report as well.
Absolutely.
Same thing. Thanks for, you know, running the traffic. Speed seems to be a little better. And then I think you were running the radar when I pulled up at ninth and and bay. And unfortunately, we had a lot of people going and doing the flashing light. So they were warning the speeders coming in. So you probably would have gotten a few more, but you know, good job.
Absolutely. I appreciate it. And if they are flashing them, they're slowing them down. That's the job we're trying to do.
Right.
Change the behavior, slow them down. I know there was a question earlier. I apologize. It was asked of me by a council member about the, the types of stops we're actually conducting. We have so far during our traffic initiatives, we did, it was broke up between speed and stop signs. And one of the major problems we have is I know people run stop signs, but there is no good place for us to sit where they don't see us and and stop completely. And it's, it's always interesting to see when you, you know, they're about to stop, blow it, and then all of a sudden their front end just about touches the ground when they see you. But we did get a good number of stops that were stop sign related. Fifth and Greenwood was one of the areas we worked pretty hard. I actually believe I saw you there one day.
Oh, yeah, I saw you there.
Oh, yeah.
No, I did not. I did not.
So we're going to continue to do that. We're going to hit the hot areas that the complaints are and keep working from there. I was able to get a broke down vehicle off of Atlantic Avenue and into a driveway. So that was one thing that there was a complaint about that we were able to take care of. Other than that, it was a pretty good month. So if you guys don't have anything else for me, I think Corporal Gilmore would like to say hello and if you have anything to say.
You're on the spot.
Okay.
Back out, but I'll be working late. So you're warning people have to come out at night now.
Yep.
Well, the residents are very happy you're back and the dogs are really excited. So yeah. Right, Paul? Like, right, Phil? No other questions, council? Thank you so much for your report.
Thank you so much.
All right, code enforcement report is in Board Docs. Please take a look at it. If you have any questions, reach directly out to Rick Crump. His report is in there. Let's keep moving. Marketing, Public Relations, Dawn.
Yes. Good evening. Today we got word that the senior center will be closing effective Monday for about a month, month and a half for repairs, preventative maintenance repairs. So an e-blast will go out about that tomorrow. But the county let us know that today. Let's see. Experience Calvert is October 21st from 12 to 5 on the boardwalk or the waterfront. We had to cancel the first one due to the weather, so we hope everyone will come out for that and enjoy the day. They're supposed to have lots of vendors and family fun activities. Let's see, what else? Oh, we'll continue with events. So we're ha, we'll have the Hound of the Town, which benefits Calvert Animal Welfare League. And then Boo Bash will follow that on the 29th. Is it the 29th? Sorry. Whatever the Sunday is before Halloween, I apologize. I'm trying to look at my report on my phone. It's not working. 29th, okay.
29th, yes.
Okay. So with that, we'll have, first we do the, the dog parade, then we do the children's parade, and then they go to the town businesses to trick or treat. No, it's a, it's a fun time. But I'll take this opportunity to say that we need two more judges. So council members, if anyone wants to volunteer for judging the Boo Bash, let us know.
Ken is going to be the emcee. He's going to be a judge. We need two.
Well, just.
Everybody's smiling real big. Okay. It's okay.
Be here for the first time. I love that event. It's like my favorite. And usually I would bring Fiona, but my dog passed away this year. And I had our little costumes planned, but.
So you won't be in town for Halloween, the 31st or because?
I won't be here for Boo Bash.
Okay, I'm leading into Halloween evening, the 31st. We wanted to see if you want to judge the business and home decorating contest. Ride around town and judge the, okay. So that leaves, I think Greg and Paul are the judges for Boo Bash.
Yes. Says I've gotten a double stare now. Yes, put me down.
For Boo Bash?
For Boo Bash, you and Paul.
Okay.
He's not speaking for Paul.
I'll say tentative, tentative right now. Let me, let me back and check his teams.
He might be in California. We understand.
Nothing like putting you guys on the spot. So anyway, let's see. So we got that down, that down, experience. That's all I have unless anyone has anything for me.
Again, Dawn's report is inside of Board Docs. Please take a look at it. There's a lot of moving parts when it comes to marketing, outreach, public relations, and, and I think she does an amazing job keeping everybody, everybody well informed. Any questions for it before we move on, council? Nope. All right, let's move right to Public Works, DB.
All righty. It seemed like the Public Works had a really busy month this month and with the little bit of a tropical storm, but just the weather got nicer and we were out and about and had a got a lot accomplished. But what I wanted to highlight from my report was this Tuesday, the Flood Committee decided to have kind of like a work session for the Flood Committee. And what they did, that committee is really active. So we, we had a work session type thing right here in Town Hall. It was like a two hour meeting. And we highlighted the components of the Bayland Flood Plan because a lot of times you'll see, you know, we get a big plan or whatever, and they kind of do some stuff right off the bat, but it kind of fades out. But we want to keep this thing rolling. So we looked at the zoning and code parts that Bayland had put in the plan. So we looked at, you know, Rick Crump was here from Code. We looked at what we maybe could change, just sort of throw around some ideas. We also looked at the grant opportunities. We had Tom Littke here. So we tried to match the plan and components of the plan with the grants that are available for this year. So we picked out some stuff that we thought would qualify for the grants that Tom had available for this year. So that was really good, I thought. And then we looked at, you know, the, the large items, like everybody knows, you see the flooding when you live in town, you see where it's at. So the large items that were in the plan, I kind of updated the Flood Committee and we have Ninth Street underway, you know, engineering design is underway for Ninth Street. Seventh Street to me would be the next logical place because you saw with the storm that we had, luckily we didn't get any more rain than we did, but the tidal flooding was pretty bad down by Mexico a couple of weeks ago. So we have that. And then we have the green infrastructure that we're looking at in town. We have an alley from Third to Fifth Street in Greenwood there that's, you know, pretty large area. So Bayland did a component in their plan where they showed a lot of green infrastructure and how maybe we can divert some of that water instead of blast. We have 50 acres in Calvert County that come right through the town, right down Fifth Street. So, you know, one of the things we want to look at is maybe some green infrastructure to slow that down or divert the water so we don't get a full blast. And with the new library being in that area, see what we can do there. But really productive meeting. I went off about two and a half hours. And also we looked at the other smaller components in the plan and how to group them and how to address them. So I thought that was a good meeting. I appreciate the committee staying on top of that and keeping that thing rolling. So and out of those, what we were talking about, you know, project and budget, budget items will come to you guys from what we're talking about, where we don't get grants. We do have a lot of money in this year's budget for Ninth Street, different things in the ARPA plan, some reventment work along the waterfront there. So there is money in the, both the current budget, but we're just trying to keep that active.
Donnie, I just want to jump in just to add to what Donnie was saying about that. So Tom, having Tom there was great because he, he specifically identified these two DNR grants. And so one would help us fund, he, you know, we have a, a chance, a shot, but would help us fund Seventh and Ninth, which Donnie said we already do have funds in the budget for that. But also stormwater upgrades to those stormwater systems at Annapolis and Atlantic. And if you think about it, Seventh, Ninth, Annapolis and Atlantic are all connected. So if we got a grant to do all four of those, that would be great. And then Donnie also alluded to this, but you know, looking at hotspots in, in town. So looking really closely at the Greenwood Alley between Fourth and Fifth. And again, Tom was able to develop, identify a second DNR grant that potentially could fu, fund upgrades there to kind of minimize peak flow coming down Fifth Street, which would help a lot of different, different areas. So anyway, it was a great meeting. It was great to have also some guest speakers, Tom, but also Rick Crump, who put a lot of, you know, time into it, provided a lot of good ideas about zoning permitting, different code changes, all these different options we can consider that will help us, that we can do in-house, but that could also help us mitigate flooding.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? All right. Thank you so much, DB. Stacy, Town Clerk.
Report in Board Docs. I'll upload it tomorrow, but the staff did meet with our consultant who's doing the salary survey. All of the staffers to fill out their exactly what they do for their jobs. It was supposed to be in last week. So there's a couple that's missing. Donnie Bowen. So as soon as, as soon as that is finished, then we'll move forward with that project.
All right. Any question? She'll get the report in tomorrow. Obviously they'll go blackout, I mean, back out there in Board Docs. So if you have any questions for it tomorrow, just hit her up. Joe, Town Treasurer.
Hey, my treasurer's report is for the month of August. The beginning balance in the checking was 506,000. We have 274,000 in debits and 324,000 in credits for balance in the checking of 456,000. MLGIP Fund General is 3 million 22,000. Sewer Capital is 93,000 and Water Capital is 45. ARPA Funds are $2 million 86,000. Grand total is 5 million 704,000. Most significant items in my report are the ARPA Funds, which you're going to be hitting them pretty hard this year. So that's a good thing. And then expenses would probably be the recon, Able Recon, who did the sewer manhole for the capital. Those are two of the major ones.
Well, you got her report loaded. You could take a look at it. Have any questions, council? You do, shoot an email over, reach out to her so she can update you. Thank you so much.
What about?
We're good. All right, waterfront manager.
What are you doing? I don't really have anything outside of my report. I was going to touch on the events, but Dawn did a great job doing that. So September was relatively, you know, it was still, it was a very nice month weather wise. So we were still relatively busy down at the waterfront. But it's been pretty quiet. We're just gearing up for, believe it or not, Christmas, getting ready for fall.
So even though the, the, the beach season is over, our season is far from over with our events that we went over today. That took about an hour to go over a lot of that stuff today. But also we have the bathrooms that we have to maintain, all the parks. So waterfront manager and his staff, it doesn't stop. It's just adjust a little bit here and there. So if you see anything, say something, reach out to us. Any questions for Phil? All right. Thank you so much, Phil. All right, let's move right into public comment. The town of North Beach welcomes public comment. Please enter a step to the podium. State your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. If joining via Zoom, please enter them into the chat box. Anybody else can stand up? Yep.
Good evening. Elizabeth Lawton, 9232 Erie Avenue in the beautiful town of North Beach, Maryland. I'm just delivering this. Also, I just, you know, this whole process is actually turning out really good. I know when we first started, it seemed a little confrontive in, you know, people coming to me and asking questions. And as we're going through this process, I'm kind of learning and getting better at helping them understand that how their personal issues connect to this bigger picture called North Beach and all these different priorities that we have. So I think this is, this is coming out really well. I think also that the switching now to the view on the comprehensive plan and how that actually would influence a future budget plan over a five or 10 year period to then influence annual budgeting is something that seems to be new to people, which isn't new to me, I suppose. But I'm connecting those dots as we're going along and explaining that to people. So I think this process is working out pretty good, and I hope you're finding it valuable.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm loving fall, winter and all of that. So have fun.
Thank you. How Joey, I'm gonna pull you up later. Sorry about that. Yes.
I'm Eric Rossler, 3942 Third Street here in North Beach. Just had a, just wanted to express some concern with possibility, the one-way road going down Third Street and additional parking. And then also what's going to happen when, you know, we have to have places for people to stay and park. But once they get beyond that, they're going to go, you know, park right in front of my house, front of my neighbors' houses. Majority of my neighbors, myself, we don't have off-street parking and we just would have, you know, commuters and, you know, Airbnb with, you know, sometimes upwards of 20 to 30 people staying there. Just looking at maybe the possibility, if you're going to go forward with that, if we could get some residential green paint signage in order to keep our parking areas, you know, we want to have the tourists here. You know, we support the tourism and the industry it provides, but we also need to make sure we take care of our people and have them, you know, have access to their home, be able to park from their house and not have to walk a block. And then the other concern would be the commuter bus, you know, the commuter bus does come down Third Street when it turns around, going the opposite way. If it's a one-way street, it's going to go by the fast stop on Second Street. I mean, there's the cars backing out of that parking lot there. You have obstructions from the building there. Just looking at something along those lines to maybe address how that's going to work, where we're going to go with that. So that way we can keep everybody, you know, safe and then also make it hospitable for the people who live here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Yes. So what Eric said on Third Street is they have a concern about the conversation about making Third Street one-way and how that could drive more cars back into the neighborhoods that would take more parking from the residents beyond that area. And this, another area, because they have a VRBO there now that already has 20 to 30 people come to. Right? Right. And then the second thing is the commuter bus that, that drops off in the town and then comes around, actually leaves out at Third Street. If this is one way, depending on the one way, it could drive the commuter bus up to Second Street to make a, a, a left going east, which then would put them by a fast stop, which obviously is going to bring its own dangers or own, could be own issues by itself. Did I summarize it pretty good? No, absolutely. No, no. And I appreciate the comments. All right.
Mike, can I just, can I just comment on that real quick? So we're probably going to get, you know, comments, more and more comments over time. Is there going to be a formal, I'm sure there is, but just asking a formal process where we solicit comments from town residents and they can put it?
We will have many, many public meetings. Everybody will know when it's coming up. We still have to continue to finalize some ideas. The ideas are not the final. It's just our final, our ideas, and then we'll get the residents input.
Great.
So we make sure that everybody understands exactly why we came up with these thoughts. So yeah, absolutely. Any other public comment online? In the audience? All right, nope. All right. So thank you so much for the public comments. Let's move right to business items. That's when Joey gets to come up, everybody. All right, Joey, come on up. Joey Hill is with the Boys and Girls Club of Southern Maryland. She's going to be giving us a quarterly report. She had a busy summer, so I'm going to turn it over to Joey Hill from the Boys and Girls Club.
Good afternoon. I'm Joey Hill, the CEO of Boys and Girls Clubs of Southern Maryland. Oh, okay. Can you hear me?
Lauren, can you hear her?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So thank you, Mayor Ben, for this opportunity to speak tonight. First of all, I want to thank the town for always supporting us and making sure that things work for us well at the club, especially our maintenance people who help us out like many times and they keep the building outside looking great. And they give us advice when we have to get somebody to come in and fix something. Without them, we would make a lot of mistakes. So thank you, Donnie, for all your help. And I appreciate everything everybody does at office. I always get help from the town of North Beach in it all types of ways. So this partnership is absolutely excellent. And we're grateful to be partners with the town. So I want to thank you for all you do for us and for the kids. And I wanted to update you on what we've been doing lately. We currently have five sites. We have two in Calvert County, one here in North Beach, one over at Calvert Elementary. We have two in Charles County and one in St. Mary's County. When Governor Hogan was in, he wanted to start expanding clubs throughout the state, and Governor Moore has continued that. So we've been able to expand, serve more kids. And I just wanted to let you all know that over the last year and a half, we opened all five, four new sites, which is wonderful. And this summer, we served 280 kids in summer camp. Another 147 kids in partnerships. Like we had kids who came down from East John Center and from Annapolis Garden to interact with the kids doing our STEM program. So we made sure that all kids were welcome and they came and enjoyed the town of North Beach. So it's really, really exciting. We are in 2022, 23, between the five sites and our Bookbag Program and our Food for Families Program, we served over 2,600 kids. We provide a holiday presence for 387 kids. And when I say holiday presence, And when I say holiday presence, I mean, we had people who sponsored children and we didn't go to five and below. Kids got bicycles and clothing and some gifts that they really need. So we were really happy with the people who came for it to help us support the children at our clubs. Um, if y'all haven't been, uh, been by the club lately, I would encourage you to call and let's give you a tour because we have a fully functional STEM center that was, um, provided to us by the Cal Ripken Foundation. And it is amazing. We have a 3D printer. We have a smart board. I mean, it's something that we never would have been able to afford without that grant from them, but they, it is really high tech. So come by and see it. Uh, some of you don't have kids, but it doesn't mean you can't be involved in what we do. We would really love for you to come and enjoy or see what we do for the community and we definitely still need your support. Um, we wanted to remind those of you who haven't been to the club that the Bayside Club over here in North Beach has an art room, a computer room, a reading room, library, games room, a gym, and now a STEM center. So we also want to encourage you, um, through our partnership with the town to encourage people to support us. We can always use volunteers and to support us as we're going into the season where children would need things like socks and clothing. So if you want to support a kid as we're going into the holiday season, just call me. I'll be here in the end. I have cards. But I'm always, always so grateful. And when I talk to other people, being able to say that our partnership with the town on North Beach helps us to be able to do the things that we do makes me very grateful. So I want to thank all of the citizens of North Beach, the council, everybody here for what you do to make the Boys and Girls Club work. And thank you for your time.
Joy, real quick, you have a, a Christmas fair coming up. When is it?
December 16th. I know that sounds late, but several people told us that they wanted last minute shopping. So December 15th, uh, 16th, which is a Saturday from 10 to 3, we're going to have a bazaar and we're going to be having baked goods and, uh, raffles and that type of stuff. As a matter of fact, we're raffling off a Tesla, not a real one for adults, but it's a toy tester. Y'all got excited, didn't you? We have, uh, we, we have a. We, you know, um, the toy testers had to be ordered. They are not something you can get from the store. So we have a toy tester. One of my board members, um, had one and her child only used it twice. It's brand new. I went to see it. It is beautiful. Um, baby is blue. And we're going to raffle tickets off for $25 apiece and two for $45. And I'm going to have it at the club next week. I'm telling you, that car is amazing and it goes like five miles an hour. And which is why her child didn't ride it. She was afraid, uh, that was going a little too fast. But it was one that was ordered and made by the Tesla company. So it really is a rideable car with all the bells and whistles. So that's one of the things where I thought they're going to give the money to the club. So please support us and please come out to our.
Might be the only one I can afford. I might have to try it. All right. Thank you so much, Joy. Anybody have any questions for Joy before she leaves? And, uh, in the future, Paul works for Elon Musk, so just call him next time you need something from Tesla.
Maybe you should just buy.
I'm not even sure I was supposed to say that publicly. Deputy, get up here.
Maybe you just buy the car, donate.
That's right. All right. I know. He has a real one. All right. Thank you so much. Uh, let's keep moving. The ordinance, uh, Mayor report, I'm going to concede my time. I'm going to start online with Lauren, uh, Council Reports, Lauren.
All right. Um, I don't have much. I kind of already talked about the flood stuff, um, flood liaison stuff, so not much. Um, happy Halloween to everyone and I hope to be back, uh, in that room next month. Still kind of recovering from this broken ankle, but I'm getting a lot better. So, um, you'll see me walking around a little bit going forward. And, um, that's it. I'm going to, I'm going to flip it to, uh, Mary.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I really don't have much either. Um, you know, I was doing pickleball, balling by the bay at the church and that ended, um, Tuesday night. Great turnout. A lot of residents came. Um, they'll probably do it again next year, uh, maybe in the spring. But, um, all I have to report is I went to the Senior Center 20th anniversary and they were kicking it. Like I couldn't believe it. Like, you know, some of the things that people were wearing were just so much fun. Everyone was happy. You know, the food was good. They had a band when you walked in. It was pretty cool. But anyway, um, that was a good time, but that's all I got. But, uh, I guess I'll be judging the business towns. And then, um, you know, I hope everyone has a safe Halloween.
Thank you so much. Let's move right over to Mickey.
Thank you all for coming out and joining us online. I'm excited for the Boo Bash as I always am, because it's always fun. Um, and before that, how the town is always entertaining, watching all the dogs get dressed up and all the shenanigans that follow from that. And then before our next meeting, we'll have the town cleanup on Saturday, the 4th of November, which is always a good time to get rid of any brush or debris that's collected from, you know, just summer happenings. And I think that's it. See everybody next month.
Thank you so much. Let's move down here. Paul?
Just, uh, thank everybody for coming out tonight. Um, I did check my calendar and I am available on that day, so I can, I can judge. Your pressure. Um, and also the, the camera RFP is still in progress. Apologize, Stacy. Um, I will work on that. I'm going to try to do it right now, literally after this meeting while I'm sitting here, see if I can get that over to you. Uh, that's. I, I appreciate it. That's been on my plate for, for too long. But yeah, working on the camera RFP to get that, uh, pushed out and sent out to get things upgraded across the town. Uh, and other than that, I think IT wise we're doing pretty well.
We are.
Check with our vendor on, on a few things, but, uh, yeah, we seem to be heading in a pretty good trajectory. Um, Joy, do we finish out the, uh, transition of your software from the server to the cloud? Okay. Okay. Got it.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you so much. Greg, Councilman Johnson.
Just thank everyone for coming out and, uh, looking forward to being a judge. See you there.
All right. All right, Stacy, from now on, you will ask people to volunteer during the meeting. That's, that's the most volunteered we've ever had at one time. So, um. All right. So on, on the agenda, you'll see, uh, you can download it, but if, if for everybody in the audience, please go to northbeachmd.org, sign up to get text messages, emails. Um, I can't tell you the number that we send out every day, every week, every month. It's a lot. You're in the know if you sign up, northbeachmd.org. And other than that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Yes. Got a second, got a motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right. So move. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for coming.